Vice President, we will call the July meeting of the Port Edward Village Board to order. Pass the clerk to take the roll, please.
Me, Trustee Bingham.
President.
Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Grundin.
Here.
Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And Trustee Saylor.
Here. Okay, everybody's ready and roaring to go. We will rise from the plunge of allegiance. Any moment of silence, please. I, President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, Chair Linder, take a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting. Trustee Duncan, or the Vice President made the motion.
Second.
Second by Trustee Martinson. Any discussion? Hearing no requests, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Public comments on any of the agenda items? And Bruce, you said no, so we'll just move right on from there.
No.
President's report, I have two things. Number one, and foremost, unless two of you trustees want to still have it and write a letter to the clerk to officially meet the requirements of statute to have the committee at the whole meeting on the fiasco we had last month on these motions not joining up with the board agenda, the committee agenda. I have did a little bit more than trying to catch fish up in St. Gerbein, was doing some thinking about it, and I think the best way to approach this is, so I don't drop the ball again, and I'm the main one that did that but not spending enough time on the agenda, is I'm going to contact each of the chairmen when we, Mike and I review the, or the agenda, meeting agenda for the board before it's posted, to make, just to talk to the chairman on motions only. I mean, those are the big things, to make sure we're all on the same page. That would be with Eric and Dana and with Luann, so we don't have this again. And I want to publicly apologize that the situation happened like it did last time. Had I had my due diligence, it would not have happened. So that's my mea culpa moment. I would like to bring up about some of the ordinances that are not being followed by some of our residents, and I gave thought to the situation of, it seems we're cutting slack to businesses that don't keep their lawns like they should, or parking things on property. And that case in point came up when I drove down with the meetings, I looked at the Don Tar property and all the grassy areas in front of the old office building and whatever. We enforced the ordinances for residents on their property, and I would really like to see us pursue that, Mike in chief. And I don't care how you do it, but I don't want to hear anymore, well, it's his job, it's his ordinance, it's her job, it's her ordinance. You delegate, okay? And if the chief brings something up, I would hope that you would give it due diligence also. And I would expect within the week that this one, I would prefer you as administrator, writing a letter to DMI, and give them a set number of days, probably the amount of lawn they need to mow and fix up the property, it's going to take, give them at least two weeks' notice, and I would like that without objection from this board. It's just my feeling that they've been kind of sliding off on some of the things, and when Don Tar owned the property, being vacant, they kept it up, they mowed their lawns, so...
It sounds like they are keeping the property to some extent because there's a security guard there all the time, so they've got some interest in maintaining it. So I would suggest that if they don't follow through, that we may want to amend the ordinance to start it for repeat offenders, having some sort of requirement that they provide us a plan by which they're going to comply with the ordinance in the future.
Did we also have any comments on that?
I would just issue a citation, whatever the ordinance requires. I would ask for a plan. I think we're unlikely to get it.
I think we're unlikely to get it. The ordinance doesn't necessarily do, that's why I'm getting that.
Well, there's issues too, that's a whole new ballgame, and I'm sure the chief will agree with writing tickets to corporations and stuff. I mean, I was requested one time to send one about 10 years ago to move to Idaho, and I got the handle, so...
There's nothing new with those, with that business?
No.
It's happened before, and I think last time, they paid the orderly wage of Dell's crew involved in the mow, so...
And if my recollection is correct, Dell's crew did mow it at least once this year, and I believe they paid, they've paid their past due, everything past due that they've had except for one bill which they have 60 more days to pay.
So you're telling me we mowed their property once, and was a letter sent to them to document that? Because if that's the case, then I totally agree with Trustee Mitchell, then the citation should go with the letter, saying another citation will come if this is not done in a few weeks. But make sure, because Judge McGrath is going to want that original letter, you know, for the court.
We'll go back and make sure we have it.
I believe one was sent out by the village.
They did?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I'm done pontificating. Moving on to...
Can you make that?
Could I do that?
Anyway, too much specularity. Airport Commission, Trustee Martinson, please.
The Airport Commission met on June 7th, and everybody's had the minutes, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the airport meeting which took place on June 7th, 2018.
Motion by Trustee Martinson, approve the Airport Commission meeting minutes, so we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Duncan, discussion. Hearing no requests to speak, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Chairman Saylor.
Sir, we had a couple motions with a meeting on June 19th. We had a couple motions, I make a motion to, let me make sure I read it right, to resurface for bunker avenue from Brentwood Drive to Port Road, as submitted by Wood County.
Motion by Chairman Saylor to, for the resurface of a bunker avenue in the parameters laid out in the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Trustee Mitchell. Discussion. Trustee Martinson.
Do we have a price? Do we have a cost? Was there a bid submitted, or what?
Yeah, $55,000 for that section, but that included the village crew doing work around manholes and things like that, and then taking the mill stuff out to the Port Road site. So our village crew is doing some work in there, amongst those details, $55,000 for a mill and one and a half inch asphalt.
And so the millings, we will actually remove them, we're not going to pay the county to do that? We're doing it ourselves?
No, no, they are doing that, but they're taking it to...
Are they charging us for that?
It's one quarter of the 55. It's cheaper that way for us to house or to take our property.
Out to 54?
For them to truck it out.
Truck it out, okay, so we're going to use it?
Yes.
This will actually be asphalt, not the, rubbing up glass that was put on glass time, rather than the bunker, but tore my shoes apart while I was walking the dog.
The boiler, the boiler slag as well, they own, when they had the steel cordon, they'd use it a few times, isn't it? But yes, this is a one and a half inch overlaid. Any other discussion? What are you doing, plotting?
My dog was an injury of that, yeah.
Sorry, I asked. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
All right, and then I make a motion to purchase the playground equipment at a cost of $8,000, which is the budget, the amount in the budget, and we identified some equipment and the locations, and I gave that stuff to Mike. I make that motion.
Motion by Chairman Saylor, second by Trustee Grundin, to purchase playground equipment for the $8,000 that was budgeted, and they have identified where the appropriate locations for the equipment to be replaced. Before we, is there any discussion?
What are those locations?
Here.
How many pieces?
Three. It's a tire swing and some kind of, and then two climbing things. So we can't use the existing tire swing that's out here, so that's got to come out, so they have to replace that. Dell is going to replace the teeter-potters, the physical wood, and then there's two climbing things that are going to be out here. That's it. $8,000 is in game right now. And Sue looked at the board table. So I looked at ripple, ripple's got, I was looking at quantity, and it looked like this park out of all of them, at least amount of equipment. So by putting something at ripple, it'll just kind of stick out, we're going to have to figure something for Audi Park. We just put two things in at Audi Park, so here with those two pieces of equipment going out the door, I just thought we'd repunch it.
Any other questions or discussion?
Anything in the $8,000 next year, I'll find some.
And hopefully it'll add to the splash cap and give us other places or other equipment play on as well.
Hearing no more requests to speak, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And then lastly, we discussed, we ran out of room at the cemetery for single lots, so we have to, it's already designed for expansion for single lots, but we need to create the road that's going to go up and around. So we put it out for bid, and Bezider came in with the bid, and I make a motion to, make sure, to accept the bid by Bezider to construct the road in the new section of the cemetery.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, or motion by Chairman Saylor to accept the bid by Bezider's to construct roads in the new section of the cemetery, second by Trustee Mitchell, without objection, suspend the rules, there should be a lot of questions to be asked on this as to what's all involved, so go ahead.
How much is the...
Came in at $800, and he was going to take a look at revising it a little bit to bring the cost down to $8,000.
And then you're talking about paved or gravel?
It's going to be road base, I think.
Road base. So there's, yeah, there's the grading of it, and the specs were like a whole bunch of gravel and work, so, but asphalt would not get on it this year.
Which is probably the good thing, isn't it, to let frost and get a pat down after the shift run, yes.
I just have a question regarding the location of that expansion, is that the backside of the...
There's a master plan, right? If you had the expansion on there, I don't know if it's that grass field kind of, I don't know for sure. But the roads are already, are designed in there, this isn't something where we're just taking machines out there and cutting a road, but it's already a plan for future expansion, that was probably 20 years ago.
Okay. I have another question, are we still accepting trees to be planted in memory of individuals, or is that off the table?
I have never really seen about that recently, so I don't know.
We can, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting, but I know we have talked about it in the past meetings, so...
Call the question.
Go ahead.
Call the question.
Ask a question.
No, I'm calling the question, it's a vote.
Oh, okay. We have a question to vote, so I guess we will, we'll get back onto our Roberts Rules of Order. And all those in favor of the motion for Bezider to do the construction work of the new roads in the, or the roads in the new section of the cemetery, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. That answer your question, Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then to kind of just discuss a few other things that happened at the meeting, we discussed the signage for the semi-truck traffic on Seneca Road and Port Road, and Mr. Corman is, who's going to contact the DOT since they have so many rules and expectations on what we can't have for signage on all the roads, so he's going to look into that and break it back. So it already is a sign out there, and it's flagged, so I don't know how much more we can do. We also, I think that's it, I, there's no motion on here for the water meter stuff that's already been taken care of at this meeting, so I'm just going to strike that motion from there.
So with that, if anybody has any other questions, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Chairman Saylor made the motion to approve the minutes of the last third committee meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Okay, Chairman Duncan, Pit Committee.
The board has the minutes, and we will approve the minutes of our meeting.
Motion by Chairman Duncan, approve the minutes of the Pit Committee.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundin.
Does anyone have any questions in regards to the minutes?
We couldn't do anything because the previous meeting was not, yeah, was not...
And that was because of...
We did not have a call.
For?
Plank, plank.
Did you call?
I was expecting them to be there.
Yeah, I mean, no biggie, but it is a biggie, you have to reach out to the folks and follow up the initial call, or send a letter of the meeting and then follow up with the call.
I was, it was my understanding the agenda went out to them.
Pardon?
It was my understanding the agendas went out to them.
I'm sure they did, but in the future, just follow up with them. Hi Bob, how you doing? Got a meeting next Tuesday.
Bob was there.
I was the one.
There was a conflict with one of the folks, right?
There was, there was a, one person had a conflict with another village meeting at the same time.
Who's the other village meeting?
Please inquire Commission Chairman.
Well, you scheduled both of them for the same building?
Not same building, but across the same time.
The same, sat on both, I agree with you?
Yes.
I know who that is, I have to rectify that. Okay. Do we have a rule?
No.
Because you asked a question, which really meant a question, about, and we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Public Safety.
Public Safety Committee met on June 28th, and with that meeting, I'd like to make a motion to approve Nick Dasal pending background check and physical.
Chair Barton made a motion to approve Nick Dasal pending background check and physical. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundin. I will open the discussion. Who is Nick Dasal, is he a fireman or a policeman?
This would be a fireman.
Okay. All right.
Associate, pardon.
Associate.
Yeah, associate.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what department they were going to, so, okay. Motion by Trustee Barton, second by Trustee Grundin. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the, to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
I would also like to make a motion to approve Tanya Schultz as an associate firefighter pending pre-employment screenings.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to approve Tanya Schultz as associate firefighter pending the pre-employment screenings, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundin. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And I would also like to make a motion that came under the July 2nd Public Safety Meeting, to place the current senior part-time officer into Wisconsin retirement system due to patrol coverage needs. This will be covered by the current 2018 budget, which was reviewed by Administrator Coleman.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to place the current part-time officer, I don't know why the word senior's in there, but the current senior part-time officer into the Wisconsin retirement system due to patrol coverage needs. Discussion.
Excuse me, can I just state that the reason the word senior is there is because we do have two part-time patrol officers, and this is just putting the most senior individual into that.
Yeah, I had my own, I shared my views on this with the administrator when I was up north, but there's still no full filled-out part-time thing, but that's a discussion for later, you know? That was supposed to be done also, and it's still not done. There's four openings, we have two. So I expect that to be done sooner than later. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, approve the minutes of the...
Both of you?
Yes.
Okay. Of the previous two Public Safety Committee meetings, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman Mitchell. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we go into Finance and Human Resources Committee.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, approve payment of the bills, second?
I need to correct that, I'm sorry.
What did I do?
We need to, we have one bill we're not going to be paying at this time.
Okay, we, we didn't get a second, so just go ahead and...
Okay. Motion to approve payment of the bills except for the Vanderwall and Associates invoicing.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to approve the bills, accept the recent bill from Vanderwall and Associates for $6,519.10 pending, and I have a right bill. And do I have a second on my motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Duncan. Discussion. Anybody want to know why it was pulled or anything? Okay.
Why, the reason it was pulled is because, I'll let Mr. Duncan explain.
We continually get bills for $6,500 or more, and the itemization that we're provided doesn't provide any detail. It just says, worked on document, $3.2. Doesn't indicate what document, talk to city or village official, doesn't say who, what the subject was, I just want some more detail, because if we're going to continually get this kind of billing, I think we have a duty to at least understand what it is that's being billed and what they're doing for it, so that we can justify it to any citizenry who asks. So I asked them to send it back and ask them to provide more detail and to do that in the future. That was, that's a motion that was approved.
Anybody else?
Does that be the final bill for them?
Oh, no.
No, I'm not going to let Mr. Coleman explain that.
We have a contract with Vanderwall to work on tax incremental district number two.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And there's a number of items related to that, including the final plat, rezoning, developer's agreement, and, oh, amendment to the tax incremental district, boundaries and eligible projects.
Okay, thank you.
Who's the poll works on all that stuff?
Any other discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the journal entries in the previous month.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, approve the journal entries in the previous month, second? Second by Trustee Saylor, discussion. Hearing no request, all those signify by, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting.
We have to move to approve the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
We have to have a motion approved by the board to send the bill back.
Oh, there's two of them.
Oh, there's, actually, there's two different motions, okay? One is, is to remove that from the bills, ask, get it was to send it back, and ask them to provide a federally advised bill.
Motion as to what, Trustee Duncan, do I have a second? Say, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chairman Martinson. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any discussion? Hearing no request, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the committee, excuse me, Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Duncan, approve the minutes of the FHR meeting. Discussion, all those in favor?
We don't have any minutes yet. We can't approve them. Because we just had the meeting, we just had the meeting, we don't have any written minutes.
They will be, the committee will approve those minutes.
Both are taped.
I will second that motion, that, the approval of those minutes will be done by the committee at the August 9th meeting. We should be out of the business of the board approving committee meeting minutes, they should be doing their own. We should approve our board minutes, but that's fine. All those in favor of habiling that item? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We'll do it next month. Anything in the legal business, true?
I'm almost afraid to.
Yeah, what's that? Okay, that's it then? Unfinished minutes from previous meeting.
Got tons of that, just can't put any of it on the agenda.
New business. And Mike, this motion to adopt Resolution 2018-2, Compliance Maintenance Resolution of the Wastewater Utility Operating Year 2017, I will have made that motion, I'll look for a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Duncan, it's all yours to explain.
This is an annual report submitted by Ben Martinson, will be along with this resolution going to the Wisconsin DNR on the wastewater utility operations, a summary of performance, and this resolution acknowledges that you approve of this report.
Does he create that report, or you create that?
He creates that report.
Any questions, Michael? Hearing no request, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Under new business, I'll also make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-3, amending Chapter 1, Section 1.06 of the Village of Port Edward's Code of Ordnances for dealing with the Police and Fire Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Martinson. Discussion, first I would like Nick to explain the reasoning, please.
Thank you. The reasoning, while technically under the statute, we're allowed to have a three-person Police and Fire Commission, we do need all three for a board. So the issue becomes if there's any, if there's any emergency, if there's any, anything unexpected that comes up... Anything unexpected that comes up, and there's an issue of some importance that they need to address, it may end up being put off for a month or longer, depending on how often they choose to have meetings. So this is at paternity giraffe suggestion that having... Having five, the same way, say, the city does, its police and fire commission will guarantee that there will not be any circumstances under which... Well, it'll functionally guarantee, because ideally we won't have... They'll be able to get at least three people together at some point, that there won't be a situation where there isn't a quorum, and therefore that some type of business, piece of business of significant importance with relation to the police or fire department won't be able to be handled for up to eight weeks or more after it's... After a complaint has been made. So... And then presumably this will be followed by, if it is passed, then the president would have to nominate and the board approve two additional members, because we have three that were nominated and approved at the last organizational meeting. So it's strictly... It's... The purpose behind this is really for practical reasons, not so much legal ones.
And at first, I didn't really see the sense in it, but now after hearing about a plan commission meeting that couldn't be held because of the lack of force, so I guess this is probably the way to do it. Any discussion? It may... And I may not have the facts completely straight. It's interesting to note, I read a lengthy article from the Milwaukee Journal about our friend, the center of the universe, Milwaukee. I believe Tom Barrett, obviously the infighting that goes on down there, looking to change the state statute, it's a long ways from that, to remove the police and fire commission as the... As a factor in letting the police chief or fire chief become terminated. Obviously, there's some politics behind a lot of that down there in Milwaukee. But it's just interesting to kind of see what's going on. I don't think there's anything in the legislature on it, but it is being kicked around, so... Just an FYI, if you see something in the journal or wherever, just take a peek at it, it's kind of interesting.
And that's the way most things happen legislatively in this state, the most common denominator.
Yeah. How long ago? I don't know. I just read the journal every morning, and so it could have been... It caught my eye right after I read the sports section. At least you have your priorities. Any further discussion? Hearing no requests to speak, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Clerk Treasurer?
No, nothing.
Village Administrator?
No.
Chief of Police? Fire Chief? All right. This is for you. The village board meetings for July 11th through August 14, 2018 are Tuesday. July 17th at 5:00 PM will be the Streets Infrastructure Recreation Cemetery Committee at the Municipal Building. Tuesday, July 24th at 5:00 PM will be the Property Planning and Information Technology Meeting at the Municipal Building. Thursday, July 26th at 5:00 PM will be the Fort Edwards Public Safety Committee that will also be at the Municipal Building. Then on Thursday, August 9th at 5:00 PM will be the Finance and Human Resource Committee meeting at the Municipal Building. And then finally, on Tuesday, August 14th at 7:00 PM will be the village board meeting right here at Edwards Alexander Shelter. Yes?
Do you have a time for the... Can you repeat the time for the pit meeting? Because I believe, didn't we switch it?
Did you change it?
Later?
I had it down, still at 5:00.
Okay.
Are you... You having a plan commission meeting to get that stuff done?
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, here's the... Let me see here, a second. I think we did planning commission at 5:00, hit 5:30.
Okay.
Yeah. Because my problem is, is I'm in Minneapolis at 11:30, so for now, we're hearing. So the traffic, I hope I'll be back by 5:00.
Okay, so that'll be on Tuesday, July 24th, 5:00 for the Plan Commission at the Municipal Building, and 5:30 for the pit meeting at the Municipal Building. Thank you, sir. Got you on.
I thought we were going to have a special board meeting. Did I miss something?
Oh, the committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Earlier, my diatribe, I said I think it'll work out just as well.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The chairman, and just make sure their motions are cohesive and both...
All right.
I missed that.
All right.
And I know Eric is always available, and I know Luann's always available. If you pitch him, I have to... I have to roll him in and roll his motions, which we could do after the meeting.
Well, most work... Most times of the day, if you're calling me on my cell phone somewhere around 10:00, you'll probably catch me in the car.
And I should probably give you a new number when I get one, right?
Well, yeah, because it just came up on my phone, and I'm like, I have no idea who this is. I constantly have, because I'll call clients from my phone, they'll just save my cell phone number, and they'll start calling me, and so I don't want to get too much in the habit of answering client calls at 10:30 at night.
Anything else? Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee... Second by Trustee Mitchell. We stand adjourned.